Okay, I call this committee of the whole meeting to order. First item on our agenda is the honoring, the state of Washington honors two Bellingham police officers, and there's quite an extensive description here, so I'm just going to turn it over to you Chief Cook.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I wanted to take the opportunity to make you aware of two significant events in recognition of our police department. If you're not aware, the week of May 11th through the 17th is historically National Police Week. This past Friday, May the 2nd, there was a memorial ceremony at the state Capitol at the police memorial where the governor appeared and proclaimed May the 2nd through the 17th in Washington is quite an extensive week, but he called it Police Recognition or Memorial Week in the state of Washington. We attended that ceremony as we historically do. We generally send honor guard members there. It's to recognize and pay respects to individuals that have lost their lives in the preceding year as police officers, and also to recognize those that received some recognition during the course of the prior year for meritorious service. The first item that I'd like to bring to your attention is the recognition of a line of duty death that since 1930 has gone unrecognized by the state. There was some local attention to that death in the paper in Bellingham, but very little statewide. Officer Otto Brown was employed by the Bellingham Police Department for approximately five years. He was a motor officer, and on March the 5th, 1929, he was en route to the station on his motorcycle when he was struck from the rear by a taxi. The collision caused the motorcycle to collide with the telephone pole, and Officer Brown was thrown into the street. He sustained severe injuries, spent several weeks in the hospital, attempted to return to work. However, in January of 1930, he died as a result of those injuries, complications from those injuries. He was survived by a wife and five young children at that time. We were unaware of Officer Brown's death, duty-related death, until some research was done by one of our own current motor officers, Scott Stewart, who in doing some research determined that there had been no recognition of that officer's death. Scott prepared the paperwork, and we applied to the state for state recognition. So last Friday, Officer Otto Brown's name was added to the police memorial in Olympia. We were very proud to play a part in that. He has five surviving grandchildren. All came to Olympia for that ceremony, one from Alaska. The family was very appreciative of the department and the state for that recognition, and memorializing their grandfather's service to this city and to the state of Washington. So it's kind of an interesting dilemma for me as a police officer in my career. I've seen this happen on a lot of occasions where officers have been killed in the line of duty, and that death has not been recognized. So this is a very important thing for us as a police department and as a community. The second recognition we received was presented at the state memorial during the same ceremony. And if I can, I could like to recall your attention or draw your attention to some incidents that occurred last year. On August the 8th of last year, you might recall, there was a robbery at the Shell Station on Meridian, and a pursuit resulted from that robbery, and a shooting incident involving officers from our department as well as the sheriff's office. And I'm going to take some time to briefly go over some points from the document that you received this afternoon. Before I do, I'd like to point out that Sergeant Don Almer is sitting to my left, rather reluctantly, but he is here. And as I mentioned, the robbery occurred, a description was put out. Sergeant Almer spotted the suspect vehicle leaving not far from the scene, called for assist, as he should do, and while awaiting that assist for that stop, became involved in a pursuit. During that pursuit, shots were fired at him and his patrol car. The suspects lost control of their vehicle at the roundabout on Smith Road near Mount Baker Highway, where again a shooting incident continued. I think you may have a question about what I'm about to describe to you, and I'd be glad to answer it, but I think it demonstrates the level of training of this department and the skill level of this officer seated next to me. When the suspect, the primary suspect exited the vehicle, he fired shots at our officers. He was concealed behind a vehicle, and they could not, the returning fire could not reach him. Sergeant Almer skipped rounds from his patrol rifle under the vehicle, striking this individual and knocking him to the ground. That did not incapacitate the suspect. He was still armed and still willing to put up a fight. Because the officers could not get clear line of sight on the suspect, there was a continued threat to everyone's danger there, to their well-being. And Officers Bean and Moyer provided some cover fire, and Sergeant Almer moved to the roundabout. If you know that roundabout, it's a small raised area of earth, and took cover behind just a very low round rise in the ground. I'd like you to consider what that means. It provided him with the ability to flank that suspect and get a clear sign of fire, and he returned fire, striking the individual, incapacitating and also incapacitating the weapon he was carrying at the time. The officers were able to move in, take both individuals into custody. To their credit, they were able to provide emergency medical treatment at the scene to both individuals. What's unique or noteworthy about that is the hospital emergency room personnel commented on how well that initial first aid had been provided, and made the assumption that it was performed by the EMTs who arrived at the scene, not knowing that it was the very officers involved in that gunshot fire incident that provided that level of care. It's debatable to some whether or not the suspect's survival can be entirely attributed to our officers, but I think it is a substantial reason that both individuals are now alive awaiting trial and incarceration is my hope. I can't explain to you the level of professionalism and the courage and bravery it took for Sergeant Almer to expose himself in that way, not only to prevent an ongoing shooting incident, but to help preserve the safety of his fellow officers. He exposed himself to what in my opinion is a high level of risk, and quite frankly goes beyond the pale of any expectations that we have. But I think it's representative of the nature and type of individuals we have in this police department. I think it's noteworthy, and it was worthy for recognition by the state, so we submitted Sergeant Almer's name through a vote of his peers to receive the State Medal of Honor, which he proudly received with his son and wife this last Friday from the governor of the state. And unless he would like to make some comments...
No, thank you.
One last thing that I would like to make you aware of is, as part of Otto Brown's line of duty death recognition, we've had this photograph and dedication statement placed in a frame, and we will put it in our main hallway at the police station as a reminder to all of our officers that any given day when they go to work could be their last.
Chief, can you have him come up here and shake our hand?
Yeah.
He might be shy.
He is. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. It's okay, you can applaud more if you'd like. Okay. Our next item of business is a presentation of options for rules to govern use of electronic communications devices during our meetings. Maybe most, all of us council members should recall that we've discussed this at our retreat. So at our reorganization meeting in January and again at the retreat in March, we discussed the need for policy to govern use of communications devices by council members during council meetings. Options are going to be presented today, and we may vote to pass a resolution containing rules for use of communications devices during our meetings, and our policy analyst, Mark Gardner, will be presenting those today.
Good afternoon, council. Mark Gardner, Legislative Policy Analyst for the Bellingham City Council. I have a very short PowerPoint presentation for you today. This topic, consisting of two slides, other than the cover slide here, this topic has been discussed twice by this group, once in January at the reorganization meeting and once at the retreat. So you've had some prior discussion about this. At the January, March retreat, council requested that options be brought back for consideration for council internal rules, and so that's what I've done here. I've got a memo that summarizes what 10 other cities have done for these rules, and there's also a resolution in there with two options. If either of those work for you, you could vote to pass those today if you so wish to do so. And just real briefly, I wanted to go over some of the issues that other communities have seen with regard to cell phones and other electronic communications devices. Obviously, they're tremendous value to everybody these days in terms of bringing in information, but they also bring forth some concerns. For example, council members could receive information during a meeting that's not immediately available to the general public or to other members. Decorum or distraction issues could arise if use of devices are or appear to be diverting attention from the business of the meeting. Communication could occur during meetings between council members that is not immediately available to other members of the public, and problems could arise regarding management of public records requests or with regard to records retention requirements. So those are some of the issues that have come up elsewhere. And in your packet, in the memo and in the resolution, there are two options for you to consider. There would always be other variants on these options, but I wanted to have these as a starting point for your consideration. They're quite similar, but I've done a little compare and contrast here. Both options would allow the use of city-issued electronic communication devices to access the council agenda. As you know, you've already agreed to have that available. Second, both options would authorize the use of devices to pull up or otherwise read documents that are useful to the business of the meeting. And going towards the bottom, both options would prohibit general use, non-emergency use of all devices for communication during a council meeting, and would in particular prohibit live communication regarding the city business. I think this is one of the more critical things, the idea of getting messages from somebody in the public, for example, and then having that information that other people don't have access to during a meeting. So those are the similarities between the two options. The only differences are with regard to monitoring devices for emergency purposes for work or family emergencies. Option one would not allow this, would ask a member to step outside or otherwise wait for a break to monitor possible emergencies, whereas option two would allow the use of devices to access messages regarding an emergency, and then would request that that member then step out, but the issue is can you monitor or not a possible work or family emergency. So those are the general choices there, and I've got those written out in sort of the longhand form in the resolution and in the memo, and I will turn that over for you for further discussion.
Okay. Speaking of, as I'm on my device here, any, okay, Gene?
I, option two, you know, option one to not allow, I mean, we are public officials and we are doing a job, but when it comes to family, that's got to, you know, if there's a family emergency, you have got to handle that any way, shape, or form. If you see something, you see it there and it pops up. I don't see how we can go with option one, so I would say option two.
Okay. Michael?
In general, I'm in favor of very strict rules on this. If there's any possibility that what we're doing here is compromised, that's unacceptable to me. But I'm with you. If my mom's in the hospital, my daughter's injured, you know, I'll leave the others sick of you to do the city's business. I would want to step out. So I also am in favor of option two, and I think it's important we put in writing rules that will make sure that our public process here is not threatened in any way.
I have a question about the second line, allowing use of reading devices to access documents that are pertinent to the conduct of the meeting. Documents, does that include websites? Are those considered documents? Just checking.
Well, that one's a little bit tricky. I think the most obvious thing, I spoke with Peter Raffado, and he was saying, well, if it's something you could physically walk in a meeting with, and that, as you know, often occurs, somebody will come back with four or five documents, that that would be something that would clearly be acceptable if it's something that comes up in passing and it could be found on the web. I admit that's a little bit of a gray area. If you could find the pertinent document through enough searching, is that something you would want to be doing? And so this one is a little bit tricky. The way Peter put it was that certainly if a document could otherwise be brought in and accessed beforehand, what's the difference between that and accessing it electronically? So that's why this is there, but I do agree that there's a little bit of gray areas that might require a little bit of monitoring and practice, and then maybe there's a way to tighten it up, I don't know.
Terry?
Yeah, I think one of the examples I talked with Mark about when we were doing the waterfront, you know, Jack and I have quite a collection of documents relating to the waterfront, some of which, you know, weren't included in the packet, but we had brought because been involved with it since the very beginning. And, you know, you walk in with that, so if you're using the city, you know, provided electronics, and we're dealing with an issue that has some background that might, you know, we can relate to, you know, to bring up, it seemed like that might be, that would be appropriate.
So for example, I have the Attorney General website up right now. Because of that presentation, I wanted to know what the name was of the commemorative week for the police officers, and I had to Google it because I didn't catch what he said, and I have to report out. So I don't, would that be appropriate activity? It's not a document necessarily. It's an electronic document, okay.
It's not the baseball score.
Well, no, it's not the baseball. Although I did go to my Facebook feed to look at the title of the firefighter that I went on training with so that I could report out on what his appropriate title. So it's that, you know, if you're just looking at information, I don't know.
Well, I think one guideline would be if it's something that is very pertinent to the meeting business, and that if somebody requested in a public records request to know what that was, you would feel comfortable. So there's, this was the trickiest one, and I have to say initially I had an option that didn't include anything there, but my understanding is that that wasn't necessarily a real strong opinion on the council to eliminate all kinds of background documents that might otherwise be useful. I also think over time, as people become just sort of so used to these devices, oh, they forget to print something out where they're going to pull it up because they know where it is, and so why shouldn't they be able to? And I think that you might feel like your work is constrained if you can't do that. But this is, this one was the trickiest one, one of the trickiest areas in the sense...
Also, the point of this tool is to not have to print so much for our purposes. That's why we invested in it. Pinky, did you have your hand up?
I did. I was just thinking of an example this morning of something where, as I was doing the Lake Walken policy, where I was thinking, oh, I should have given information, because Ted gave us an email on how the opening for the aquatic invasive species, and I was like, it would be really nice to have those numbers, but then that would meant that I'd have to look up his email, and how does the public feel about that? Does it look like I'm just being distracted and looking up at my computer? Or, but I'm actually, would have been nice to include the numbers that he gave me. So I can see how this could be a very useful tool, but I am also concerned on how the public's going to feel about us using this tool. But again, I think that our whole lives are moving in this direction, and people are more accepting of realizing that these are a resource for us.
Michael?
Well, I'd like to point out that this is not an ordinance or a law. This is a resolution. We don't need to worry about defining points in the language. I think this is a public promise that we're making, that it will be a pertinent document. I think every example that's brought up is pertinent, and I think we understand that, and the public will. I pull up maps is my most common thing to pull up. I believe that's pertinent. Every example you give, and I believe is pertinent. So I think we should pass option, actually, I'm going to move, that we recommend to ourselves to pass the evening the option two resolution.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that recommendation? Okay. Oh, Terry?
I guess just one comment. I think, you know, the important part of this isn't that we have every, every instant covered, but it's can we look a citizen in the eye and say, I am doing, we're changing how we're doing business because of technology, and I am doing my work, and I'm doing this to better, you know, the city of Bellingham. You know, if we can answer that straight faced with it, then that's covered, you know? And I think that's the test we've got to give ourselves.
Yeah. And clearly, the most important item here, as Mark pointed out, is that last one, is that we're not conducting communication about our business during a meeting, and we all agree we never do that.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a motion in a second to bring forward a recommendation for option two this evening. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll bring that forward this evening for a final vote. Next item is, thank you, Mark, presentation, speaking of, yeah, very related to our last discussion. Presentation on the new council materials management solution, it's called. City council materials are now presented in a new and improved way. Staff will demonstrate the new system that includes an improved webpage interface that integrates the meeting materials with the video. And Nicole Oliver is here to take us through this this afternoon.
Sorry for the delay earlier, technical difficulties. So I'm Nicole Oliver. I'm the IT Training and Project Manager, and was the project manager for the implementation of the new council management software. It's been a project that actually began in 2011 with a request for information specifically related to council legislative management software. We wanted to check the market, see what was out there, did a whole bunch of research in 2012, and issued an RFP for a jointly legislative solution and enterprise document management. After some demos and evaluations, we chose Highland Software for both solutions, did separate contracts, and actually, the enterprise content management system is up and running in municipal court. We did that one first, and much of the council's legislative history will end up being accessible through OnBase, which is the solution that's now up and running in the court. They have about 13 scanners. They are imaging everything. They're no longer printing electronic tickets, which is great, and we're going to get the judges up and running in the jail soon, and they'll be basically paperless. The training installation and work on the system began in late 2013. Our team included Brian Heinrich, Tracy Lewis, Linda Anderson, Jalen before she left, and Marie has picked up very quickly. We had in IT, Mark Smith, Jody Mullin, and Steven Niedermeyer. We worked a lot of hours on this, on this solution, and we're pretty pleased with the results. Our biggest challenge was the video encoder, which is what was acting up again today. So it's, but we really do believe after two months of piloting that we've got the details worked out. We also, as part of the project that you don't see from the public side, is an electronic submittal and review and approval process of your agenda bills. Those used to be hand-delivered, hand-signed, hand-passed around from parks on Cornwall down to Post Point. People were signing things all over the place, and now it's all done electronically, which is great. Let's see, what else? So I think I'm just going to, oh, the project budget also included your iPads, so, and as well as some Surface Computers that our key directors are using to access the materials and reduce the dependence on paper. So I'm going to demo. From the government page, under council...
How come Ron Stan's picture ain't here?
It rotates.
It's just not Stan.
And we got, Stan is no longer...
Yeah, we can look at Stan.
We got Stan out of there.
We got him out of there.
He was holding on for dear life.
He was. He was on this really random page that I didn't even know where it was coming up, but he found it. So anyway, the council meeting materials are now accessed into the public access portal for SIRE, which is also, the shortened URL is cob.org backslash meetings. So what you'll see when you come to this page is any upcoming meetings, which would include today. Because we are streaming right now, live, you also see the live view of what's going on right now, which is going to be embarrassing because it'll be me talking. Oh, good, there's the picture. Okay. So we have an interactive, that's crazy, system where you click on the item that you want to see the materials for, and then you can open up the agenda bill by clicking on the icon. And so people can watch the meeting, look at the materials, and after the meeting, the best part is you can fast forward to where you want to see your item in the meeting. So going back, you have to go into 2014 to see the videos that have been published, and we have some here from April. And there are a couple of little things in these videos that are a little bit off, but we fixed them all, so they won't be happening from here on out. But I just want to show you how quickly things forward. Right to Public Works, they go right to the Alabama Study, and then you have the documents here visible, and you can look through them and see what the council had to say about that item. And searching, you can search, let's try waterfront. It won't, it won't go back that far.
You broke it.
Just, just since April, we have had all these items that mention the word waterfront, and this system looks at every word in every document, so it's a very thorough search result. You can fine-tune it by selecting which meeting types you want to look at. And the next steps are adding the Planning Commission to the system, Hearing Examiner. We're debating whether to put the Hearing Examiner in SIRE or put it into OnBase. That's still up in the air, because the Hearing Examiner operates much differently than Planning Commission or Council. But regardless, the archives take you straight back to Lotus Notes, which are the databases, the combination of multiple databases that have supported the council for a long time. All of this information will be getting migrated to the new OnBase solution. That's the next phase of the fun times we have ahead, I think.
How far back do our archives go, Nicole? We were looking at that the other day.
How far back do they go here?
Yeah.
It goes back to 92.
To what?
1992.
Okay, online, 1992.
Mm-hmm. Just minutes for several years, and then... Just minutes for several years, and then you start with agendas and minutes, and then you start with some videos. Videos go back like two years. We've been trying to not store them, because they take up so much room. But the legislative log goes back till the beginning of the first thing the city did, and you can search for any agenda bill that has ever been done.
Do you know when that was, nineteen?
Eight, it's, I think it's like eighteen ninety-something-
Oh, yeah.
...is the first one. Nineteen oh-three, nineteen oh-three. And all the ordinances are also online since the beginning as well.
It's the dawn of time.
Dawn of time.
Yeah. Michael, oh, are you ready for questions?
Any questions?
Michael?
Two things. You just mentioned that we disposed of the videos after two years, because they are such a large file. I think that's a loss.
We have them at BTB-10. We just don't provide them online.
I see. So, they're, someone could access them. Great, that's very nice.
But the good news is, actually, SIRE will store them. For the external users who are looking at the video after the meeting, they are going to SIRE hosted, and they'll store them for six years.
So, this page right here, I still don't know what the difference between the agenda PDF link and the packet PDF link. And then the other question is, some people are having a hard time finding out, where's the overall agenda? You know, that's not-
Sure.
-highlighted in red or something.
Yes, it's not. You can't really treat any meeting differently than another meeting. The only thing you can do is publish them in a certain order. So, what we are going to do in the future is make sure that regular meeting is at the top. Because of the videos being separated by committee, so that we can capture your voting electronically as well, we do separate agendas and separate meeting minutes and separate packets, and then separate videos for each committee. But the entire regular meeting includes every same materials that are in the regular meeting. So, if you just want to see what the council's going to do today, you have two choices. You can either open this web version, or you can download the PDF, easily save it to your desktop and have the agenda, or you can download the entire packet and open, and it just opens automatically in Adobe. But that's the big one. That's the one that looks exactly like what you used to have, and it has the committee times listed on it, so you know when the committees are.
Okay, so those two things, agenda is just the, the cover sheet.
Right.
Packet includes any materials that go with it.
And the agenda, when you open it in the web version, you get that whole interactive experience, so that it is just the cover sheet, but when you click here, you'll get right to those items that were attached.
Any other? Pinky?
I, I just want to say how pleased I am. When I first came and saw how much paper went through council, I was mortified, and this is a huge step forward for us. Economically, we're saving money, and environmentally, we're making a difference. And I also wanted to put a special shout-out thank you when Jalen was gone to Tracy, Nicole, and Linda, who really stepped up and, and took this project on, and, and I'm sure lost a few hairs through the process. So, thank you so much for, for helping us out. Thank you. Roxanne?
Just have a quick question on uploading videos, like, after they occur. How soon does that happen, so we can refer community members?
Well, it, it kind of depends on how the day goes, because each one needs to be uploaded separately, and we have to set the jump points to the items in the committee, so that the, they correspond with the materials. So, we try and do it within the next day or two. That's what we did on our previous videos, usually got uploaded by Thursday, because it, it required kind of an extensive process to do that, that we don't have to do anymore. So, probably by Wednesday for sure. Jack?
So, Nicole, this process of, of what you went through in order to pull up the packets, and because I think, just somebody, just somebody from the community wouldn't know what a regular meeting is versus a committee meeting or whatever. Is there a way to be able to have, either at the top of the page or somewhere, where it has a little bit of a user-friendly instruction?
Directions. Yeah, I was actually thinking about that after some of the feedback. We just sent out a press release last week about the process, had a great coverage in the Herald Politics Blog, which is the best, best blessing you can ever ask for, right? And even Tracy Ellis at KGMI gave us a thumbs up. But this page is kind of in stone. It's not easy to add information. We could potentially add something right here that would link, or I could add something on this page-
Yeah, maybe that page.
...a little how-to. I can do that, no problem.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good idea, because it is a little bit, you know-
It's hard, if you don't know.
Anyone else? Ryan?
I just wanted to echo Pinky's comments about leadership Nicole provided. Also, Linda Anderson and Tracy Lewis, they did a tremendous amount of work, and Nicole was the chief hand-holder for that process. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, if there's nothing else, that's the end of this section. And we'll move on to approving minutes. We've got two sets of minutes for the afternoon. One is, we convened this committee of the whole for the Lake Wacom, the annual joint meeting for the Lake Wacom groups. What's that one?
Joint meeting?
Annual Lake Wacom Joint Councils and Commission Meeting. And then the other one is Committee Meeting Minutes from April 21st.
Move approval.
Second.
Michael?
So, now as I understand it, we're, each of the minutes, because of how we're doing electronically, is, won't come in one packet, we'll get like-
Correct, yes.
And then when we move approval, we will move approval all committee meetings-
Yes.
...from the previous one.
Yeah, so now, when we get meeting minutes, similarly as to what Nicole just said, everything's going to be a little bit separate, so that we can put them into the system separately. So, unfortunately, minutes will be a little bit longer, because they're all a separate piece of paper, but-
It's all right.
-whatever, it's less than the whole packet, I guess. We, we took a few steps forward and one back on this maybe, but it's, it's all, it's all in general moving forward. Okay, so, is that a motion for both sets of minutes? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve both sets of minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes passed unanimously. Older new business. Terry?
Yeah, I have one item. Because I got, thinking about it a lot. Lately, we've been seeing a lot of stuff out about rail travel and, you know, petroleum trains and things. And remembering, last fall, we, Community Wise Bellingham came to City Council and presented information report on rail travel and potential, rail travel with, if, with Gateway Pacific Project being built, second siding, and other information. At that time, they, we had talked about them coming back as they, as they presented the draft transportation plan, and as they completed and did more work on their transportation study. So, I was, thought about having them come before the Public Works Committee, but then I thought, well, it might be better, you know, the rest of the, the council might be interested. So, I wanted to bring this up about having them come back in early June to present to the council their updated transportation rail study as it relates to the coal project.
Okay. Michael?
I agree. Rail transportation is one of the most important issues the city has focused on. We actually have still some unanswered questions from letters we've sent to the county, and what we haven't had is actual, specific rail data going through Bellingham. There was a lot of projections based on kind of statewide numbers rather than specific accounting of Bellingham. I think Community Wise has some actual data now. I think it's important to hear that. And if you're asking, I'm thinking this should be Committee of the Whole. And Public Works makes a lot of sense, but-
Right.
-maybe Committee of the Whole instead. That'd be my preference.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, I guess I'd like to move that we invite Community Wise Bellingham to present their latest data in early June meetings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I guess I, I'll call myself. Can we request that they work with staff-
Yes.
...to make sure that they're-
I think that's a good idea.
...kind of lockstep in what they're providing us. Okay. Brian, did you want to add anything?
I was just going to offer that Community Wise contacted our office late last week. We're actually setting up a time. We'd hoped to meet this week, but it looks like it'll be next week to discuss their report. So, be happy to work with them and-
Great.
...how we can bring this forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, oh, to bring a recommendation tonight, I guess. I'll just do that. Okay, Pinky, did you have something?
No, I was going to wait. I have other new business.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to give a little update on our energy working group-
Great.
...and our work on the Georgetown Energy Prize, and let everyone know that our letter of intent was accepted. And on Earth Day in Washington DC, they did do a press release with all the cities that are going to be involved in the content. We have received our application. It is due on June 30th, and we are enlisting a Western intern to help us complete that. All finalists will be notified whether they'll be in the contest by September 30th. At that point, if we are approved, we will be developing an energy plan, and that'll be for the two-year prize duration. And that will be due on November 30th. The contest starts in January of 2015. So, if we are approved, we feel as though this is, this is work that an energy manager would have to do if we actually get into the contest. And at that time, we are actually going to recommend that we hire a resource conservation manager for 2015, and that's something we'll be bringing to budget. Michael, is there anything you wanted to add on that?
Well, yeah, just, this is, this explains a piece of paper that's on your desk. We have had a resource conservation manager before. The job of the resource conservation manager basically is to save the city money to pay their own way by finding cost efficiencies. We had let that position lapse in the recession. Pinky and I, in the budget discussions coming up, I think the 19th, Pinky will bring it forward. We'll, we'll introduce this formally as a request for the council to consider. But that's what this piece of paper is, and it has a job description from the position before. My concern is that we may need this person on board the last two months, or maybe three months, last quarter of this year to start working. And so, I, I've only really mentioned this with Public Works. The position would be Public Works, about whether or not it's possible to start that hiring process sooner. But to do so, of course, we, the council, would have to make a discussion on this matter before we move forward. So, that's my personal thing, is I'd like to move this position forward, kind of out of, sooner than waiting for the January 1st budget year. So, that's what this is about, and we'll talk about it later. But I, I actually want to thank, Pinky and I are the, the energy working team-
Yeah.
...but she's like eighty-five percent of it. So, I really want to, yeah, so I really want to congratulate most of what you're just talking about. This is Pinky's handiwork.
That's great. So, when you say "we," you meant me and Michael recommend this as the working group? Just, just-
That is correct, and also with our investigation with Brian and with Ted and with Mark Garner, we have sort of looked at what the duties and responsibilities of this, and this is the determination that we've come to together.
Great. And so, we'll pick this up on the 19th. Okay. Any other older new, Roxanne?
I just wanted to say that I had a great meeting with Councilmember Wise recently, and we've been getting some considerable input, and I think we could do some good understanding of shopping cart issues.
Oh.
So, shopping carts are frequently left in our neighborhood areas, and we need to get a hold of that issue. And so, I started doing some research and seeing what other cities are doing, and I'm going to call it the shopping cart responsibility section of my work. But I'll be happy to work with Councilmember Wise, anybody else is interested, to possibly propose some options to council that we might want to consider about that.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? I've got a few little things. I want to report out real briefly on our retreat action items that we so specifically set deadlines for, and responsible parties and outcomes. And we're doing well, but I'm just going to check in on these and update folks. So, one of, first item was improve the agenda bill's style and substance, and I was the lead, and my deadline was April 30th. I've met with Janice and Mark twice about this. Essentially, our purpose is to clarify the agenda bills. This is kind of speaking a little bit to what Jack was alluding to earlier about being more clear with our written communications, and maybe even on the agendas themselves. But we're specifically talking about agenda bill descriptions, and the purpose is to provide better communication of our business to the public, and improve access for regular folks who aren't necessarily immersed in this like we are. Even for us, sometimes it can be confusing. And make the presentation of information visually appealing, improve accuracy, et cetera. So, we're continuing to work on that. I think the next step is, I'm going to see if we can solicit some feedback from members of MNAC, and then we'll make some recommendations on some improvements. The next one was ideas to improve communication to the public in general, and Michael was the lead, and I believe you've met with Janice about that.
Yeah, we've met twice, and actually, we're meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock. Part of the goal here is that the City Council has particular responsibilities to communicate with the public, but we want to make sure that that's just a piece of actually citywide communications. And Janice Keller, for those who don't know, is our communications director's and director in the mayor's office. And so, we'll be, so that's, that's a work in progress. What was my deadline for that one?
May 19th, so you're way ahead of schedule.
We'll try to make it.
Okay, the other one, schedule a mini-retreat to review our items and check-in. I'm going to call this that. So, we're, we're checking in. April 30th, it was due, so whoops, I'm a few days late, but I think we're doing fine. Advisory groups, role in confirmation. Jack, you were the lead, and by May 5th. I was going to check in with you and Kelly on that. Anything going on with that? Okay, well, we can check in afterward, if you still want to be the lead. Okay. Re-convene the committee restructure work group. This is a one-time thing with, oh, with a TBD lead. We never decided. Does anyone remember what that is? Re-convene committee restructure. Oh, that was us making recommendations for morning meetings and shifting the schedule around. We were going to check in again, and that was you and me and Seth last year. So, you and I should-
Yeah.
I'm going to put Terry Bornham in here.
Put Seth in.
Yeah.
Semi versus Seth.
He's the lead.
We, we've still got till May 19th, so we're okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, adoption of council meeting rules via resolution, April 15th was our deadline, and Peter was the lead. And he has done quite a bit of work on that and sent me some things to work with, so it's in my court now, and I'll be putting it on a future agenda very soon, I'm sure. Cell phone rules, we just addressed, and we'll be voting on tonight. Mark was the lead. Good job, Mark. And then political campaign restrictions, if I have a shared-use phone. We got a memo from Peter by our March 31st deadline, and I don't think there was action required on that.
Mm-mm.
Okay, any questions about any of this stuff?
No, sounds good.
Nope. Okay.
There action going to happen on the, that last one?
I thought you said, is the rapture going to happen?
Yeah.
Is there actual, action going to happen?
It happened last week, and we didn't make it.
It hap, oh, sorry, don't confuse me. I can't recall if action was needed on that. It was just clarifying information as to whether or not we could use our personal cellphones if we're running for office, if they're partly paid for by the city. But that, of course, the case is yes, because it's only supposed to be, our stipend is, doesn't necessarily prohibit us from using it for our personal use.
Has the stipend kicked in yet?
No, it has not kicked in.
And what's the hangup?
That'll be in the future. We'll put that on the agenda to discuss as well. Because it was in the budget, I believe, but we haven't done, taken action on it. Okay, so that's it for those items.
Good job.
I also just wanted to, I'm going to do this at both meetings, but correcting my forgetfulness with introducing our new legislative assistant, Marie Marshon. Is that the right pronunciation? Okay, so, if the camera can swing over to Marie. This is Marie Marshon, our new legislative assistant. For many people, Jalen Walker filled that booth for a number of years, and we went through an extensive hiring process recently when Jalen moved on, and Terry and I were part of that. I will say it was exhaustive, very thorough, and Marie did an excellent job, and we're very pleased with our choice, and she's already come up to speed very quickly. And you can definitely tell the difference as to whether or not we have support. At least I can. So, thank you very much, Marie. Welcome. Okay, and then- Okay, and then I also wanted to report out that I went to Fire Ops 101 training last Friday with the government, the Political Action Chair for Bellingham Fire Department, Steve Dwyer. It was in Richmond, Washington, at the Hammer Training Facility, which is a federal facility, I believe, with all kinds of different training opportunities. Michael has attended it in the past. I wish you would have told me how hard it was. It was hard, very challenging emotionally and physically. I was very humbled, extremely grateful that Steve was my shadow for the experience. He definitely had my back. There were six activities we went through. I think there were about 40 elected officials from across the state who were brought there by fire departments all over the state to just kind of show what firefighters go through and the extent of the different kinds of things that they have to undertake to keep us safe in our communities. We did a blind search in a building filled with smoke and went through a maze in the dark like that on all fours with all the gear and the oxygen and everything. We put out a propane tank fire, which was very scary for, I'm not into fire, come to find out. We climbed a 150-foot ladder into a building. Those things move at the top, by the way, like this, and in the wind, like this, and then they're going like this. And it's hard. Oh, I cut a hole in a roof to vent a building on fire with a chainsaw. And, oh, did a Jaws of Life rescue from a car accident. That was incredible. And a number of other things. It was a full day and a very warm day, and I just wanted to say thank you to the Bellingham Fire Department for supporting me to go do that and learn more about what they do for us. And I encourage anyone here to lobby to go. They can only take one person every year. So it's, it was quite an honor. And as an award, I got this awesome hat.
Wow.
And they asked us to display it in our office, so I would like to display it in the council office, if that's okay with all of you. And just remind us that the Bellingham Fire Department is a tremendous asset in our community, really here to serve, and a lot stronger than I ever imagined. So that's it from me. Anything else before we adjourn until this evening? Okay, we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock tonight. Thank you very much.